Thank you. Good evening, everyone. In accordance with provisions of Massachusetts General's Law, Chapter 30, Section 20, notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals will meet Wednesday, May 8th, tonight at 7:00 PM.
Recording in progress.
In meeting room 124, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk. Additional public access to this meeting shall be done via Zoom online video conferencing. To join, follow the web link or call and dial number. Thank you for joining us tonight. I call the meeting to order. The hour being 7:06, we have a public hearing continued relative to Pond Street. I see Daniel on Zoom.
Yes, Senator's engineer is on Zoom as well.
Hi, how's it going?
Good evening.
Well, yeah, good evening. Thanks for having us here. I'm here with Brian Higayshen, BSC Group. The last hearing when I was there before you, we had showed you what we thought was going to be the final version of the plan. We went to the planning board and ended up adding just a few feet of additional wooded buffer in accordance with a plan adaptation that the planning board had given us. So we matched that plan. Brian Higayshen on here made those changes. We delivered them to Richard, I believe, on Monday. I hope he has gotten those over to you. But as of our last hearing, it didn't seem like there was any comments or objections from the zoning board of appeals. And the big change to the plan is just adding additional wooded buffer, so we hope that wouldn't be anything of controversy. That's really the only change from the last few times we've been here.
Is the plan available yet? Are you working on it?
No.
We delivered it to Richard on Monday digitally.
We put it in your shared drives, so you might not have a chance to take a look at it.
Okay.
Brian, if you want to freeze the things, maybe you can, we'll give you sharing, and you can share your screen and talk through what the slight, you know, what the changes are.
Yeah, if you'd be kind enough to, that'd be helpful. Just walk us through those slight minor changes and...
So just make, yeah, Brian, co-hosts, yeah, that'd be great. I feel that'd be easier than us walking through the plan.
Is this what you sent me on May 3rd?
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record, Brian Higayshen, BSC Group. I assume you're all seeing my screen now?
Yes.
Okay. Let me just jump to the...
No, you know what? Not me either.
This is different.
Yeah.
Got it.
What?
Oh. Well, we were just talking, sorry.
That's all. Just want to make sure I'm here and everything. Okay, so this is, by and large, this is the biggest area of the site where we made some changes. And we previously had a setback here of 53 feet. We've actually now gained a foot, 54, but we've also, if you notice, this is the tree line over here now.
Yep.
I mean, this is a substantial amount of, you know, reduction in the clearing of the site, which we were going to propose. I mean, this whole entire area here is going to be unchanged. And as you know, it's full of mature pine trees. It also has a little bit of understory, but it's pretty heavily wooded. That's the most significant change. We had, we also brought the tree back, tree line, excuse me, the proposed clearing, we did extend it towards the property line in this section of the property here and tightened it up in a few other areas. And the reason we did that is because we were getting some shadows on the array. So we had to, that was something which we should have done previously. But that's really the biggest change in what you've seen previously.
And no changes to the roadway, the access roadway?
That's correct. No changes there at all.
Okay.
No changes to stormwater, everything else, the proposed planting, everything else is as you've seen before.
Okay. Any questions from any board members? Anybody on Zoom or anybody in the audience that has any questions? Courtney just walked in. We're on the...
Sorry, everyone.
On Pond Street, and we're just reviewing the final plan that I think the planning board is comfortable with. And they made some minor changes to it and pushed the tree line back about another foot and made some other minor adjustments. No change to the access road to, for the police. So it was really a minor change over the last month. So I don't know if you have any questions for them?
No.
Okay. Anybody in the audience have any questions?
Yeah, just for the record, we moved the shortest part back one foot, but the area on the corner that the planning board requested, we moved back more than a foot. I believe the previous plan, the tree line, was just above the stone wall you see. So in the corner here, we moved it, I'd say about 15 feet in.
At least, Daniel, yeah.
Yeah, at least 15 feet. So it was only one foot in the shortest area, but where the planning board wanted it, it was a much bigger change. And I know the planning board watches these, so I want to make sure that they know that we moved it back, just like they asked us.
Looks like we lost this amount.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. No further questions? I intend a motion to close the hearing?
Make a motion that we close the hearing for the special permit for large-scale grounded mounted solar photovoltaic system for 90, 92, 96, 100, 100, or Pond Street and 12 Sharon Avenue.
Is there a second? A second?
Go ahead, you can do it.
Any discussion?
Still fine, no.
I still don't get into the shit of Drive. I've been away too long.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, gentlemen.
So I'll put together a decision for you for the June meeting.
Yeah, we'll be meeting middle of June, and so we should have a decision drafted and approved that evening.
Okay, great. Thanks so much.
Good luck with the project, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks.
Take care, thanks again. It's almost 7:15.
You want to see this? Okay. It looks like the planning board just shows the cutoff line. This is from the decision. Show cutoff, is that a dark line?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
All right. The hour being 7:15, we have an appointment with the applicant from 90 and 20 Shire Drive. This is an appeal continued from April 27th. Welcome. Want to identify yourself for the record again?
Yes, hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Gerrier. I'm the operations manager at Island Lighting and Power Systems. And I was before you on April 27th, appealing some violation notices we received with reference to materials that we were storing at two lots that we had adjacent to our property that we own, with reference to a displaced material for a solar carport that we were developing. The carport is now finished, and we relocated or thrown out everything that was being stored on those two properties in question, 9 and 20. Mr. McCarthy came over at one point for a walkthrough where we were nearly done. We are now 100% complete with removing all items from those two lots. And I brought some pictures that I shared. I don't know if they're visible in front of you. If you'd like to walk through them, you can see, anyone's welcome to come by the lots as well and walk through with us, but we are in compliance at this point.
Just a minute.
Did Bob get a chance to take a look? Did you know?
He duly noted me.
Apart from the course.
That was me. What was the title of it? What was the file? No?
Don't recall.
Okay.
Yes, today is...
So this Graham from the email, that's all.
Okay. Jeff, while she's looking that up, getting the photos and so forth, in the file, there was, it seemed to be a long history of notice violations. Are you familiar with that, the history of that?
I was not familiar with the notice from 2018 at Mr. McCarthy, and the board made me aware of previously. I am aware of the notices that we received last June or so. It might even be proprietary to that, when we first started the carport construction. Not knowing that we were in violation, we moved items to these adjacent lots that are in question now. And then Mr. Bullock was in touch with us and let us know we're in violation, and he gave us a certain amount of time to remove those items.
And so that goes back to your, we'll go back to your June of 2021?
Correct.
So that's when you became familiar with the situation?
That's right.
And then...
We were first made aware, that's right, me personally.
You personally?
Yes, that's exactly right.
And now, just can you walk the board through that timeline from that? So what happened since June of, regard, let's forget about the 2018, what happened from 18 to 21?
Sure.
Because you weren't there, so you don't have knowledge of it.
Right, right, yeah, sure. So we were notified that we had 30 days originally to remove the items that we had stored on those lots. At this point, the carport was being constructed. We had 12 30-foot foundations being drilled. We had no way of relocating everything that we had displaced for that construction. And Mr. Bullock had agreed with us to give us extensions. Those extensions ran through, I believe, July 31st, and our construction just lingered through the fall and through the winter with material delays, equipment delays, issues with the ground that we were drilling in, et cetera, et cetera. We hadn't heard anything from Mr. Bullock since between July of 2021 and January of 2022, just this year, obviously, when he let us know once again we had 30 days to remove all our items. At that point, we were nearly done with the construction, and we didn't have an opportunity. I was in communication with him, but nevertheless, as a technical matter, we were still in violation.
So go back to the extension of July of 2021?
Yep.
Were you in contact with Mr. Bullock after your extension had expired?
I was not.
Okay.
No. I wasn't in touch with him, and he wasn't in touch with us. So, correct, there was no communication. And I don't put that on him, I mean...
No, I'm just trying to get the facts down, that we can all follow the timeline.
Yeah, I know, it's confusing.
Yeah, I guess it's been a long history here, so I'm just trying to understand it.
Sure.
So I won't go back prior to June of 2021, because you can't speak to that.
Sure.
Okay. So from June 2021, you received a notice of violation, you reached out to Mr. Bullock, he gave you an extension for one month to sometime in July of 2021.
Just for the record, he gave us a couple different extensions. The first time I heard from him, and I need to go back and check our communication, it was probably in March of 21.
Okay.
And then we asked for an extension, and then we asked for another extension, which would take us to the end of July.
So the last extension that you received was July of 2021?
Correct.
And now here we are today, after you got a notice violation in 2022?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And then, you know, the issue, at least as we understood it, had kind of gone silent, and then it was raised again, and we said, okay, well, we just need to finish the carport construction, we'll put everything back where it belongs.
Did it go silent because you hadn't heard, or because you thought the project was complete?
No, because we hadn't heard anything.
Okay.
So we'll have to go to those, I don't know why it's, I don't know why it's... I don't know what's going on with the Zoom thing, because it's not showing up on... We see the Zoom, we do see the Zoom people, by the way.
I don't see them at the moment. You do.
We do, and they're on the back, they're...
Oh, okay.
They're there.
Okay.
We see you, I mean, in the meeting room. But for some reason, there was going on with this. But those are the photos, at least.
Can they see this? Is it on the screen?
Can the folks on Zoom hear and see us?
Oh, there it is now, okay. Now I see it now.
Okay.
Yeah, they can hear you.
Okay.
All right, if they can see this, that's all.
And they can see that now. It's showing up, it's just not showing up on...
Okay, we'll get another, they can, okay, all right. So Jeff, if you want to walk us through...
Yeah, yeah, sure. So this is obviously our building now at 14 Shire Drive, and goes back substantial portion. On the next slide, this is an overhead shot, this is our building again, and this is the area of the solar carport. So all of this material was displaced, in fact, additional material was displaced to this lot here and another one that's in the back here. And then in the next several slides...
And that was displaced back in 2018?
No, at the January of 2020. There might have been things there, but the substantial majority of it was associated with the carport.
They were asked to get rid of things that were there before, too, right?
Yeah, right.
Correct. So if you'd like to move forward. So this is 20 Shire Drive, it's on, just on the backside of our property. Mr. McCarthy toured this with us. We acquired this as-is in back group C in 2013. What we've cleared from the lot that is recently were these items here, telephone poles, transformers, equipment attachments, large wire reels, and then some leftover conduit from projects that we moved around. And these next several shots are just various pictures of different angles. Again, just in, previously, Mr. McCarthy can attest, there were different items there. You can just keep strolling, there's nothing. Just inside these buildings, all of this is now cleared. It's meant to show left, right, front, and back, that everything that had been in there is now cleared.
Do you know when these photos were taken?
Just yesterday. I took them yesterday.
So you did say as you got started, you did get everything cleaned, removed?
Yep.
Okay, I haven't been back, I mean, I didn't go there today, but...
This is just looking from the outside of the building, just left and right. And this was the last thing to be moved. Actually, we had a tractor trailer that was over there previously on the backside of our property, basically storage and kind of mobile office. That was cleared today. That's our dumpster in the back. Those pole sections that were in the building, those were put in there, and they're all gone now.
Okay.
And that tractor trailer is gone.
Okay.
So this is the other property, 9 Shire Drive, directly across from us. Again, previously, we had wheeled equipment stored here, trailers, leftover conduits, and casings and drill bits for some of our work. This is from our building, looking at the lot. And if you'd like to scroll, this is looking left, and you can just continue. This is looking from the back of the lot toward our building. And again, you can just simply drive by this at 9 Shire, you'll see that it's 100% clear now, continuing to... So this is just meant to show, you know, our carport is now complete. Here's what it looks like in the back of our building, and all of that equipment and material that was previously stored in those lots has been relocated to its rightful spot.
Okay, so your appeal before us, are you asking us to, for an extension, are you asking us to rule on Mr. Bullock's findings? I'm not sure what exactly was...
So I guess it's a little of both. It's really two things. I was originally looking for more time. When we first got the notice back, and I think it was February, we were looking for an extension of time to get everything cleared. We've since completed carport construction, and we moved everything back. So I think we were continued from April 27th because we just needed a little more time. My notice in the application asked for it to be till June 1st. So that's really moot now, because it's, both of the lots are 100% clear. The other item we were looking for was a dismissal of the fees that had accrued for the 45 or 60 days that we heard from Mr. Bullock in mid to late January of this year.
Okay, so it seems like, would you stipulate that there was a violation for the period that he cited?
As a technical matter, yes, most definitely.
And you, and your position today is today, the violation is cured?
Correct, yep, that's right.
I do vaguely remember a portion of the debris you stated not being yours.
Correct.
What happened with that?
So there's, so there's some items that are there that are owned by Eversource, and some look to be sewer vaults. So Eversource has been on-site the last several days. I imagine that they're going to make use of that. Looks like they're tying in the backside of that lot, maybe even associated with the person who was before us. And then the area is a little unkept, and there's a cul-de-sac up there with an island in the middle. It just looks like it's abandoned. I mean, people continue to drop items there, like, for example, there was some construction mesh, which is like as big as this table, all rusted old mesh that someone just dropped there.
And you were not cited for these?
Correct.
Okay.
So let me just ask you, so going back to June and July of 2021, from that point forward, was there anything to mitigate why you didn't cure, or that you couldn't cure for some odd reason?
Yes, and that had to do with the construction of the carport. Even though it began in January of 2021, we really finished it. In fact, they're still doing the electrical work now, finished the construction so we could put items back.
But what if you didn't own the other lots? Wouldn't you just take stuff off-site?
We would, and we've since found an off-site storage place to take some of these items and put it there when we were trying to get everything cleared within the timeline that we were talking about. We've got a storage facility over at Uxbridge that we utilize now.
Okay, so you really could have taken it off-site back then, there's nothing to prevent you?
Correct.
That's what I'm, I'm just trying to get the facts, so we understand it.
Yeah, and I, right, correct.
Okay, I'll open it up to the board. Any questions?
I don't know. Rich is saying you went there and you saw that it's been cleaned up now, other than...
Yes, I haven't, I didn't go there today, so when I went...
Two weeks ago or so, maybe?
Yeah, two weeks ago, there was still decent amount of, well, actually, a fair amount of stuff, which you'd been working diligently to get rid of, because, because I actually point out what we talked about.
We did.
So I haven't gone back out today, just to verify.
You'd be going out again?
I will be going back out again, of course, yes.
Other than the, you went through all the details here, I have nothing else to add to that.
Yeah, I don't know if the board wants to take a site visit out there for their own, it's up to the board.
I'm fine with whatever it is. Fine, I, I mean, the pictures kind of say it, but, you know, you could be filming beside what might be there, but I wouldn't think you were doing that, because you've been honest with us the whole way.
Yeah.
I can't see you taking a stab at, trying to be, you know, Angelina Jolie in it or something.
Yeah. All right, any questions, any other questions from the board?
Um, pleasantly supplies that we started off with, you possibly needing more time and to actually getting it done.
Yeah, thank you. To be honest, I was too. I went out there one time, like, wow, look at this, someone's been busy at work.
All right, if there's no further questions, if somebody wants to present the motion to close the hearing?
What is it going to do with that structure?
We've, it's been offered for sale a couple times, and we've gotten real close a few times, but then it just fell apart. It never got to the point where obviously you would be involved, but, and I think it's has a, at one point, it could have been reused, but I think it gets to a certain point where the useful life is, someone might just need to scrape it.
Yeah, I think that's what they should have done with the police station originally.
They did so much restructuring of it, you know?
Rich, before we, before we entertain a motion to close it, I just want to give your thoughts on, you know, Mr. Bullock has submitted the record, I assume he has no interest in, not that I require him to come out in the evening to testify, I think we stipulated to everything, so I don't think there's a reason for him to...
Mr. Bullock?
Yeah.
No. Well, like I said in the beginning, he deputized me, so to speak, to go out on his behalf for you to do such...
But I think Jeff has stipulated to the facts and so forth. I don't think he's disputing the letters or the timeliness.
No, no, the thing is, actually, some of the pictures actually probably do a little bit better job of showing other material. That was on 20, it was actually, is that 20?
It is 20, yeah.
The one with the building, yeah.
It is 20.
Yeah, because inside the building, there was...
Stuff.
Stuff.
I have one last question. So is it in our purview then, to waive the violation, fines?
You do have the, I did speak to counsel, you do have the ability to do that, although I, I do know, I think the building department would like the fines upheld, excuse me, the cumulative amount is $13,800.
Do you know roughly the time period on that?
That was from the February notice to when they filed the application in March.
The February violation notice to the appeal?
Correct, to the appeal. There hasn't been any fines imposed right now while it's been before you.
February of last year?
No, this year.
February of this year.
This year.
Do you want to address that?
Well, you know, we certainly would like them to be dismissed, you know, it was our, certainly our intent. It was not our intent from the get-go to put this, store this material in violation. We didn't, at least I didn't, the one who was directing all this traffic, know that that was an issue. So, you know, we're trying to run a good business, we're trying to, you know, if we're doing something wrong, we want to know about it, and in this case, we did, and we solved it as quickly as we possibly could. Because like I said, once the carport was finished in February or so, at least construction-wise, we got everything back, and we threw out the rest.
Now, as representative of the property owner, what do you recommend if we have these issues going forward, and the building department finds a violation, and it goes unanswered for months on end, you know, what do we, what should they do to get the attention, really get the resolution?
Well, I mean, quite honestly, I think it's a little bit of...
That they didn't do here?
I think it's a little bit of a reasonableness test. We weren't doing anything wrong. I mean, as a technical matter, yes, we were in violation, we've talked about that already. But I mean, we were storing material on our own property. It wasn't anyone else's property. It was kept orderly. There was nothing wrong with it. But again, we got this notice, we're like, okay, yeah, no, we need to get it moved. And then we pushed to get it moved, but we didn't have a place to put it, notwithstanding your point that, you know, we could have found off-site storage. Yes, we could have, but a lot of these items are used in our regular business, so they're, they came and went from that site. That's a good point. It wasn't my own good point. It wasn't like they were stored there and kept there, they were constantly being moved.
But without the imposition of a fine, what would motivate people to resolve an issue?
I think it's communication, you know, quite honestly. And again, I'm not putting this on Mr. Bullock, because again, we were in violation. But when I hadn't heard from him at the end of July until January, I said, okay, well, maybe he sees the carport construction progress and knows that we're moving towards the goal of getting back in or outside of violation. And then when I got the notice in January, I was like, oh, okay, well... or outside of violation. And then when I got the notice in January, I was like, oh, okay, well, evidently this is still an issue. So everyone, let's get moving. Let's get this stuff back to where, to its rightful spot on property.
The only, let's go back and forth, but I guess we probably will a little bit. There was communication with, not you directly.
Yep.
Can you go in the supplemental document I have in there, please? Honestly, I think, you know, and we talked about this a little bit, but I'll kind of emphasize this point. This goes back to 18, right? So that's the.
2018.
2018. So you had the more recent, I understand, relative to the carport, but there was an ongoing issue with, there previously with stuff.
Whose position is it to respond to these issues at your business?
Um, they ultimately fall to me as the operations manager.
So in order, in the spirit of good communication, would your business be willing to, you know, get in contact with the building department, maybe on an annual basis to let them know who the point of contact is?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
There's a lot of businesses in town. It would create quite a burden on the building department to.
And that's actually a great point because, you know, I'm essentially the voice for the owners. And if Mr. Bullock had reached out to the owners in some fashion, whatever, I may not have learned about it.
Yeah, it can get lost in communication. Most notices of violation tell you it'll be $300 a day. There's fair warning that it's a serious issue that won't just be ameliorated without further.
Right, and I'm not suggesting that's, that's why it.
No, no, I, I understand that. I just wanted to just kind of get clarification. If you are the person, then it's good to know that you're the guy.
I am, I am curious, what is the initial timeframe that you were given to, um, to rectify this without having fees?
30 days.
30 days?
Yeah.
To get rid of all this?
Correct.
It wasn't like in, in stonements or, okay.
No.
Yeah, and just scrolling through the historical.
Did anyone from your company contact Mr. Bullock and said, we need more than 30 days?
Yes. Oh, yeah, he and I were in direct contact. He sent me certified letters. I sent him certified letters in return saying, can we please get an extension? And then we asked for another extension. The first extension was till the end of May, 2021. The second letter was to July 31st, 2021. And then our communication stopped between July 31st, 2021 and January of 2022, when we got the notice saying, you have 30 days to.
So after that July 31st extension expiration date, did you think you were in compliance or did you just?
I, I had, I felt like the issue had been dropped because we were in communication, at least up until that point, about yes, the fact we need to get this material back. And then quite honestly, the focus turned to the construction of the carport, which as I mentioned, lingered and lingered.
See, the last time you had the extension expire, you reached out to get another one.
Right.
This one expired and you didn't.
Yeah. Uh, I, I can't answer why I didn't do it at the time, other than just not having.
I appreciate, I appreciate your honesty.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, you know, like, and we're just trying to be compliant.
These fees were accruing as of when? When you stopped communication? That's what?
No, uh, no, I'm sorry to interrupt. No, they started in, uh.
February of this year.
Early, yeah, early February.
It was February of 22.
Rich, you're showing the one from 2018, right? Is that, and I think I saw one from July 2018 too. Is there another one? But the thing is, were there fines accrued during this time?
No, there wasn't.
Even though it says fines, right?
Correct.
I think he gave a levy to fine.
No, he didn't levy a fine then, no. So in terms of process, I mean, fine isn't necessarily, the, the, you know, the violations usually the first law, uh, order business and, and then communicate with the, uh, the offender, how long it will take to abate it and then use some judgment in terms of what the issue was and how long it may take. So, I'm just, for the record, just to start, this, all due respect to the, the, um, the carport, it's been going on. So there, there was a history before that. So that, it kind of reached that breakpoint, I think, to be honest with it. And then stepped up and there's communications from 21. If we scroll back up, you know, between.
So how much staff time between you, building and town council has gone into this since 18, do you think? Are we talking like hundreds of hours? Are we talking tens of hours?
This is a fair, well, especially more recently because you got a site every day.
Yeah.
For, so I can't, I'm not sure how mu, it's been, for the building department, it's been a significant amount of time. Yeah, for our office, um, everything's significant, but anyway, no.
I'm going to assume that Norfolk, like most towns, fines are kind of the move of the last resort and so I'm.
Yeah.
This is a four-year.
Yeah. Well, honestly, because the history.
I'm just asking if a lot of time, as tax dollars went into this.
And quite frankly, as you, well, as may, you may or not know, when you go to fines, they're oftentimes when you go to district court through that process, the tables, you know, the, the scale is tipped towards the offender to, to bait the issue, whatever it is, and not oppose the fine. So, um, again, it's just.
And if I, it helped me, Richard, you know, I think the board has some leeway here as, you know, whatever, whatever the ruling is, we can comment on the fines. We can dismiss them. We can approve them. We could, we could not even acknowledge them. We could just uphold or overturn Mr. Bullock's decision. We did that on the other one recently.
Yeah, just denied appeal and then.
We could be silent to that and then it would, that piece of it would really be with the zoning with Mr. Bullock and how he handled it. So I, I just, I just want people to be aware of what I think options are for the board. But before we entertain a motion to close the hearing, I just want to make sure if there are any other questions. If there are none, if somebody wants to make a motion to close the hearing.
Make a motion. Make a motion to close the hearing for the appeal at 90 and 20 Sherrill Drive.
Is there a second?
Um, I second that motion.
Any other, any further discussion? Anybody on Zoom? Nobody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
If you'd like, have a little time, you can, this case might be worthwhile after, towards the end and deliberate a little bit in this one.
Sure.
And then I can craft something.
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead.
The hour being 7:40, running a little, little late, not too bad. We have a continuance from April 27th relative to 6 Kingsbury Road. And this is regarding an application for a special permit. It's hard for me to see the screen, so I.
That's how I do it.
Jacob, can you hear us?
He's muted.
Okay.
Or can you unmute him?
Jacob, we can't seem to hear you.
Oh, we can hear you now.
Hang on, something's coming through.
Great.
Okay, good.
Oh, there you go. Welcome, Jacob.
Thank you.
Did you want to present? I'll make you a co-host.
Do you want to be co-host so you can present as opposed to us sharing the plans?
Yeah, that's, that's perfect.
Okay. First, uh, oh, no, never mind. I forgot what I was going to say. You read it last month.
We read it last month.
You read it last month. Yeah, let's continue. So.
Okay, so I'm here representing Maggie and David Peckman.
Looking at the application, I don't, I didn't see all the plans though.
Should have been planned enough.
Yeah, I have an email from, from March 29th. Okay, I don't, I don't have that. Okay, we got it there.
Do we lose you?
Uh, no, I'm here. Can you see that's the plan I have up on, on screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so we're looking to add an addition on the rear of the property here. Our, our side setbacks required are 25. We've only got 4.9 existing. We are going to keep it at 4.9 so that we comply with F4A. The, uh, the rear is in compliance. No worries there. The left side, uh, we've 7.3 existing. We're going to move away from that neighbor a little bit at least. Okay, 10.7 proposed. The neighbors on the right-hand side, uh, it's apparently unknown who actually owns that. We're thinking it's the town, but there's, uh, there's not really anything on record for that. The, uh, the building plans, I just want to make sure you're able to see this.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so this is essentially what we're doing. We're coming off the back of the house with a porch, a deck and a couple of bedrooms and a bathroom upstairs.
And, and the, and the height, did you say existing is one and a half stories? Is that what you?
Uh, correct.
And you're not, and it remained, the addition will be one and a half stories?
Correct. Yeah, the, the basement is a walkout in the back.
And what, what zone is this one in?
R2.
R2, okay.
I believe we need 50 in the front, which I don't think we have. Uh, we're not messing with the front.
Right, okay. So really it's expanding on a non-conforming pre-existing, but you're not making the non-conformity anymore, expanding on that?
Exactly.
So no change in setbacks?
No, no change in setbacks. The side yard is better, improved.
Size improved, yeah.
And the height is to the existing height. And there's no, there's no rear setback issue.
Okay, so he's expanding through it. So, so he still needs a special permit to do this?
Yeah, because it's a non-conforming.
Because the lots are not, the whole thing's.
Right.
So he's just expanding or he's altering a non-conforming structure, a non-conforming lot, okay.
Correct, but not more.
But not to any, not to worse, well, it's improved a little bit.
Right, okay. So that's really it?
Seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Yes.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
So let me just get it right. So the deck on the left-hand side of the prop, of the, of the building, that's getting, becoming smaller.
Correct.
Okay.
It was a little confusing.
Yeah, it was a little confusing. I got you. In my, my, I wear glasses and I don't know if they're working great tonight.
So it's going from 7.3 to 10.7?
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have no questions.
Okay. No questions for me. So if someone wants to make a motion to close the hearing, that would be wonderful.
Any others?
I'm sorry, yeah, anybody else on Zoom? There's nobody in the audience here, so.
Is that true?
Is there anybody on Zoom?
Just him.
Okay, just making sure.
Nobody, nobody in the waiting room for Zoom?
All night.
Well, no other questions. I'll make a motion to close the hearing for a special permit for 6 Kingsbury Road for the alteration or enlargement of an existing non-conforming structure. Property located 6 Kingsbury Road, assesses map 3, block 9, lots 18 in R2 zoning district.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? There being none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Excuse me.
I think that ends our scheduled public hearings for tonight, so.
We have some minutes to review.
We have town planner updates on the agenda.
Uh, yes, you don't have minutes yet.
No, we don't.
Minutes aren't ready yet.
What happened to the one we just, the one we missed last meeting?
Yeah, I thought she sent it.
She sent them. I'm just looking for them again. I know I read them.
I did too.
The ones from April?
Yeah, we were, the link.
From, you mean from March, you mean?
Yeah, we didn't, remember last week, we didn't have one reviewed?
That was, that was, that was from March.
It was April 28th, she sent them to us. We had the April 27th meeting.
Okay.
And then the 28th, she sent us, she sent us the minutes for.
For March. Right, so we haven't, we haven't approved those yet, right?
No, we didn't.
But they're not on the agenda.
Yes.
Oh, that's a problem. Oh, my God.
That's okay. We can have a fiesta next time, a whole bonanza.
Here we go. We'll get them up. We'll have three of them.
Okay, so next time we have to approve the April 27th, it falls to March.
16th.
Okay, God.
Maybe.
I got there, but I don't know. It's a little exciting to review these.
Review them. All right, well, you'll have three of them, so be busy.
Great.
A minute.
So March 16th, April 27th, Sunday, tonight.
Correct.
All right, so no minutes to review. So I guess.
March, April, May.
Town plan update?
Yeah, just, well, just plug, I sent the flyer out. I believe you hopefully got an email for the workshop for Southwood property on June 6th. It's hybrid, so if you want to come in here, you can, but you're certainly, uh, welcome just to attend virtually. That's pretty much, so, so, well, Josh Piel from MAPC is, we, is leading the planning study for the, looking at the zoning for the Southwood Hospital site. And so that, the meeting on June 6th is really an opportunity for public town officials to kind of talk about it. The site itself, development options, kind of, in terms of going through, you know, what the zoning looks like, resource areas, be a presentation, and then an opportunity for people to talk about. It's really the first step in terms of looking at the zoning potential.
I assume the others would be very concerned in that area, right?
Sure, yeah. From, from the last planning board meeting, he had reached out and met with GFI Partners, who are the purchasers of the property and talked about, you know, constraints, opportunities, that, those topics and the site. As you all know, they are in the environmental assessment testing phase right now in terms of looking at the contamination. He also had an opportunity to meet with Andy Baganowski, who you.
I know him.
Some you, most of you might know, but, but Andy's on the Board of Health. He was, he was on the Conservation Commission, the Board of Assessors, been in town a long time. But he also is, uh, had worked for, and still does a little bit, for Department of Corrections. So he's got a lot of, he has a lot of history and familiarity with this site, the Southwood Hospital. So Josh had opportunity to meet with him and talk, talk about it and learn more. And, and then he also met with the neighbors of Southwood too, as the group to kind of talk about it. Just in terms of, you know, site conditions, opportunities, threats, those kind of typical things. And also just talk about, you know, the big thing was just kind of hopefully ensuring people that we're looking at the zoning and there's options to consider. Some changes might happen or might not happen in terms of zoning. You know, this is not, nothing is done by any means. So hopefully that, that was the bigger, my sense from talking to him, that hopefully that message was conveyed. I think sometimes when you're, you know, understandably not involved this all the time, you, you hear about zoning change, you think it's done. But it's by no means done. And some of you who were in the B1 and, and zoning goes through, you know, the whole town meeting process. So there's quite a bit involved between zoning creation and adoption, so. And then at that meeting, talk about the, in terms of simultaneously looking at things. So the environmental is going to be over here. We'll talk just high level, not level detail, obviously. But the environmental assessment and conditions and remediation will feed into the zoning at some point, you know? But, uh, so anyway, I encourage you to attend if you, if you can, so.
So the environmental is a big piece because that'll steer whatever the developer really. really.
Sure, yeah, yeah. But on the zoning side, it's, okay, well, what can I do with this property to develop it, redevelop it in order to make money out of it, one, clean it up, put it into good productive use? So hopefully, as Josh was saying, those Venn diagrams, get everybody to kind of meet in them all, so.
If you keep the uses open enough to, even, I mean, depending on the contamination, there's different levels of use that you can use it for with different types of cleanup. Doesn't have to be, doesn't have to stop the party necessarily.
Right, yeah, exactly.
But I'm sure MAPC would be more than happy to tell people what you can do with what levels of contamination.
Sure. And the, you know, I think the, the community preference in lots of ways that you probably know, is for residential to be part of it. Obviously, under that scenario, then we're at the highest level in terms of.
Yeah, that's the hardest.
So, that's the high bar, so, you know, cleanup, thorough, adequate assessment, and then remediation has got to be part of the result, so.
Is there a difference in the level of cleanup if it's like something commercial versus?
Yes, huge, huge difference.
Because I know some old airfields back in New York that got converted to commercial, but they couldn't do residential. Yeah, I can stand.
Oh, yeah, yeah, significantly different.
So as a neighbor, you want them to plan for residential? That way you get better.
It's always out there.
Understood, understood.
But in reality, once it's all cleaned up, then they say, oh, no, we just want one little parking lot. But you can't really do that.
Well, you know, this is a challenging site, because you got buildings that are going to be demolished, and they have.
Stuff in them.
Stuff in them, and, you know, we certainly know there's asbestos, so.
Some of those pictures of the radioactive.
Yeah, so we don't.
I look to the same as you, and I'm like, what is it still there?
I walked through that building with Bob Bullock one time, and I was like, holy cow.
Those weren't fallout shelters?
I wondered why my personality went glowing after that.
You didn't have your badge on, you know.
Yeah, I didn't have a badge on.
Sometimes buildings like that had fallout shelter signs too, they looked like reactive signs, maybe even a fallout shelter mark.
And then you have the, you know, there is radiation contamination, part of the wastewater system, and there's on landfill.
But, you know, it rolls downhill.
A little bit different, but with MCI Walpole, with the Commonwealth announcing that's going to be decommissioned maybe the next three years, I don't know.
Well, that's another piece of this whole, it's a recent change that we need to kind of have a better, so we need to, in terms of a community, kind of start to think about that. A lot of Walpole, because.
Does that facility, does that go into Norfolk also?
Yeah.
Most of it is in Norfolk.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
The majority of it is.
You mean some of Norfolk will close down too, or just the MCI?
Well, MCI Walpole, the majority of that property is in Norfolk.
Wow. Yeah.
So these two are so, you know, so close to each other, whether, you know, it's an interesting opportunity.
It is.
So we're going to put a bid on getting this sewage system?
Um.
Be available, because the issue was that they didn't want us to hook into it, right?
Right, so this.
Does MCI Walpole go, does Cedar Junction, or whatever they want to call it, does that go to the one off of Campbell Street?
Yeah, it does, yeah.
So there's a lot of flow there.
Yeah.
I mean, honestly, there's a lot of flow there, so, I mean.
Now, the only thing, I'm not a wastewater engineer here, but.
None of us are.
We don't know what we would be inheriting.
They just upgraded.
We saw how well the state takes care of other things.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
Probably a major reconstruction.
And that's what we can see above the crap.
They're not decommissioning the sewer treatment plant, they're decommissioning Cedar Junction.
Yeah, so the wastewater treatment plant for the prison is going through an upgrade process to meet their permit requirements, however, however.
My backyard.
Yeah, I know.
I've seen it.
Yeah, so, but.
They're doing a ton.
But related and unrelated, I guess, is we did look at that in terms of, for Town Center, when we were doing the B1 work.
That's what I remember, yeah.
But it's really more residential, you know, residential kind of waste that goes to that plant. So they weren't keen of having, you know, commercial, perhaps industrial and so forth at the prison plant. So that still would hold true for redevelopment. Now, maybe you can do something differently, I don't know, but that's still a limiting factor in terms of that wastewater treatment plant would play a part, I think. However, well, let me qualify it. The MWRA sewer is in Walpole, which is not that far away from this location. So that's one of the things that, as we go forward with this study, we need to kind of, you know, do more investigation about.
Town center development, that's for sure.
Right, so.
But on the decommissioning of Cedar Junction, with that decommissioning, are they going to?
Demolish it?
Yeah, demolish it and/or put it up for sale or something of that sort, or redevelopment, if you want to call it that, into possibly residential?
Oh, it's gonna, I'm like, it's gonna sit for 20 years.
It's like the hospital we're talking about.
Absolutely.
It's gonna sit there and the state's gonna do nothing.
I hate to be a sitting.
Who knows what kind of contamination is there?
Maybe we'll get a Devon's type of opportunity out of it, you never know.
That's what I'm thinking.
You know, we could always be optimists.
Yeah, and they already have the sewer lines in place, so now that might give them the opportunity to say, okay, yeah, that's residential, you can, at least you can have sewer for a development over there, including South, the Southwood.
I can't imagine, though, that, would you want a hold of Southwood's development over how long it takes to find out what happens with Cedar Junction?
No, 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 no. But if they're decommissioning South.
Yeah, but they said they might just leave it empty for years, you know.
But.
They might not know what to do with it for years.
Right, but they do have infrastructure already going over to Campbell Street. Maybe you can tie in and use that some for them. To me, that makes a good amount of sense, because you got to, I mean, honestly.
You have to come to the meeting on the 6th, and then put that on the, that already kind of is on the list, but.
I hate when they put up all these new treatment plants, and then they don't even use them. And that's realistically what the state's doing right now. They're upgrading it for maximum capacity to all three prisons. Well, you've got one prison that's active realistically in two years, and that's MCI Norfolk. And who knows what that's going to do? Because the other ones, the other ones are already closed, and now Cedar Junction's closing. So now, what are you going to do?
It seems the cards on the prison deck are shuffling around. If they shuffle, I mean, yeah, they had an upgrade.
Their beds are, they're, which is a nice thing, you know, you're not filling beds in the prison system, but.
But would they have their right to sell capacity if they're not a public utility?
Why?
Usually when a municipality buys, whether it's sewer capacity, water, whatever it is, if it's from MWRA, for example, their public utility is authorized by the state to provide that service. I'm not sure if property that's owned by corrections, I don't know, that's, it gets to be an interesting legal question, how you function, how you structure the partnership. Because in my mind, it's just like, if they don't want industrial users, you kind of give them the right to veto, you know, large capacity connections and say, you know, there's ways that you could structure that deal to take that concern kind of off the table for them while still building out capacity in the Village Center. But how do you structure the deal if they're not a utility? I don't know. It's like, there's brighter lawyers.
Well, that discussion will be going on 10 years from now, I think, anyway.
It will still be there.
But, well, if they're building out the sewage treatment plant, though, theoretically the idea is that they are interested in selling capacity to somebody, because you don't just, it's not a.
I don't know if they're even, I don't even know.
Unless they had a super failing system, but, I mean, we'd have to look at what flows they were building for, be.
Honestly, it's already, for the most part, built.
It's already built, and so I'd be interested.
But the big picture between both communities, I think it's an important topic of discussion to kind of figure out long-term where it's going.
Yeah, because Walpole would, I mean, they, they could use sections of that too.
Sure.
Even the Lincoln Street project that we were talking about not too long ago, about the trucking and everything, that, that would have been a prime, because it's uphill from it, so I mean, it would be a downstream scenario.
Gravity.
Perfect.
Yeah.
I mean, I hope we're discussing like, also residential.
Just like contamination.
We do apartments and things like that, you know, that would be helping to the 10% affordable housing.
So that is part of the discussion, though.
Route 1A is one of the best places in terms of having a kind of semi-business slash, I know there's some residential that we have to be careful of.
Not a permanent solution.
But.
So rental, high-density rental was part of the discussion for the site?
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. It'd probably bring a few more commercial things around that area too that would support that. Again, hopefully blend it with the people, I know some longtime residents who are very passionate about, you know, balancing what we do in that area, especially along 115.
Sure, but.
That does, but Walpole's line and Foxborough, does it not, Southwood?
Walpole, not, not Foxborough, there's property in between.
Okay, not Foxborough, no.
Yeah, just Walpole.
If we're done with that, there's another meeting you brought to our attention, and I saw the town meeting too, they're doing, or somebody mentioned it, I think, is the.
The Greenway?
The Greenway, that's coming next week.
Yeah, that's next week. I should, did I not send the flyer?
You sent something.
Okay, I didn't put it on your agenda, but I sent you a flyer at least, all right. So that's next week, 26th, which is a part, in a way, a partner to this site, for sure, because that's the abandoned rail bed runs through the site. So, yeah, next Thursday night, May 26th, with the public workshop on the feasibility study for the Greenway project, which is 17 and a half miles from Walpole down to the Rhode Island Line.
Is that the railway that goes, used to go, used to go over 115 nearby?
We took the embankment down.
Yeah, we took everything down?
Yep, took the embankment down, but that's.
It's not why part of it has to run over the road, is that why they had it come around?
Yeah.
They have to run part of it on the road, right?
Um, not Norfolk necessarily, but further south, some of the bed.
Because that was the, that was the line that was actually what, the station at Cedar Junction. I didn't realize where the name came from.
Yes.
I do now, having read the history.
Yeah.
We're going to have some deliberations tonight, so we may want to keep this moving.
Yeah, you probably want to keep it moving.
Before we do, though, one, I think I made an error at the opening, tonight's May 18th, I may have said May 8th, but if I did, I correct it now. Before we get to deliberations, the makeup of the board, I understand that Josephine's term is expiring this month, we want to find out if she'd like to continue.
Oh, really? I didn't even know.
This month, next year, but, no.
Hey.
So you can let us know what, if you'd like to continue on.
I'd like to continue if you still have me.
That'd be wonderful.
Sure.
Okay, and I think the associate members, I think they're.
So if you want, is that definite, so we'll tell them that? Because they want me to tell for sure, so you're going to continue on? All right, so I'll let you know.
She sent out a.
A continuance is five years, you know, you're.
I gotta check my five-year plan for five years.
Well, that is true. No, you're right.
It is a five-year.
Sorry, they over-under every kind of possible.
So just so you know, it is five years.
Take a Geiger counter over there.
No, I'm not joking.
When they asked me, they said, you know, this is a five-year term, I was like.
Five years?
Five years.
From when, right?
Yeah, right, I'll be a lot grayer then.
My kids are going to be in college in five years.
All right, well, so you have something else to do then, five years. So I'll let her know, but now, in terms of Courtney.
Yeah, the associate members.
Do you wish to continue as associate?
Yes, yes, should I send a letter to the clerk or the selectman and let them know?
I think we, um.
Am I supposed to send a letter anywhere?
I don't think you need to.
No, I could just let them know.
Okay.
I just got to ask Tyler.
Thank you, thank you.
It's like, send them the video.
So I'll email Tyler.
Yeah, find out.
Find him, and then I'll, I'll send an email to Judith in terms of both of you, that way they know.
And hopefully Tyler will agree to do the same, I hope.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, Courtney, fantastic having you around here, so I think it's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bring a lot to the table.
Another housekeeping item, I think, before we get into deliberations, I think our next meeting, I think it's going to be scheduled for June 16th, is that correct?
Yes.
It's a Thursday night, and that might be to accommodate me, because I couldn't make it on Wednesday the 15th, but I don't know.
So that's a scrupulous.
Well, this is the 16th, but if you want to have the meeting the 15th, that's fine, it's just that I can't attend.
Who do I delegate responsibility to? I won't be here.
So.
So you can't make the 15th.
I cannot make the 15th.
But if it was the 16th, you could make it?
Well, if you want to have it the 15th, that's fine too. Keep the schedule.
Has it been announced in anything?
I just noticed on the agenda here, it said the 16th, so I.
Yeah, so it's the 15th.
All right, so.
The 15th works better for me.
That's fine, we'll keep the schedule the 15th, just that I'm pretty certain I won't be here on the 15th.
You're up?
I'm up.
He's up.
All right, I'll practice.
I will be out of the country again.
Oh.
But this time with five hours difference, so I won't be able to make the meeting.
Well, you could.
You're not going to get up at 3:00 in the morning?
No.
You're not?
No.
Sorry.
Because it would be midnight.
So do we have enough for him? Do you enough, enough for a full call?
No, bring a associate in.
I'll plan to go. And it's Tyler, I think.
Right.
Tyler, yeah.
So we have enough people, okay.
And actually, just, I see on the agenda coming up, 269-273, I'm going to recuse myself if I hear that anyway, but, so you'll have 71 Cleveland Street special permit and 269-273 Dedham Street, that I wouldn't participate in anyway, so.
Hopefully, if we continue the hearing for some reason, you'll be able to make the next one too.
It should be okay, it should be okay, I think I can plan around this.
Great, okay, great.
Are these complicated, these next two hearings, the special permits?
Dana can get right through those.
Fair enough.
Okay, great.
I travel a little.
No, I don't think they are.
Because I like them.
When I come to meet with you, I expect donuts this time.
There's only one deliberation tonight, the other one's not ready.
Oh, well, now that would be another story.
Two weeks.
Good for you.
So in terms of, yeah, so in terms of deliberation. So in terms of, yeah, so in terms of deliberation.
Right, yeah.
Tonight, I do have the 1-5 handover for you, provided. I will have, I have almost a draft done on the special permit for the fire station. I'll do the variance for the June meeting.
Okay.
All right. But I wouldn't mind after you get done with one handover, at least maybe deliberate a little bit on Shire, so I have a.
Okay.
Okay.
Idea how to go, yeah, how to go draft that one.
Freshen up mine, sure.
Has, has everybody looked through this yet?
Has, yeah, we're talking about 1-5 Hanover Street.
Right. I was going to say, I have, and I, I think it's well written.
The proposed draft decision with findings on here, I haven't had a chance to read it.
Yeah, I read it.
Yeah, I did too.
Yeah, I read it this afternoon.
So just to refresh everyone's memory, this is, this is the folks that bought, that bought one lot and it was a little bit complicated, to say the least. There were a lot of factors here. We had the town auction. I believe we had a town representation relative to a perk test that came back that it might have been done in the wetlands area, the wetlands wasn't flagged that way at that time. But then from testimony, there was drainage, there was drainage on that lot, expanded, potentially expanded the wetlands and really made that perk, made that perk test was done in wetlands that wasn't.
Let's just clarify for the record, it wasn't in wetlands, it was in the buffer, but.
Okay.
But it was within the 50 foot, was within the 50-foot no-touch buffer, so that's why it's significant under the local bylaw.
So for me, this, it's a, it's an interesting case and I think because of, I think for me, we're going through all this, I struggle with the hardship, but I think because of the facts of this one being so unique, because of the towns involvement with it and the towns authorizing the perk test and the towns promoting it that way, the public auction, and the town creating the bylaws and the town creating, enforcing all this, this was not really a, that's the hardship. These folks purchased the property with all those representations by the same organizations that effectively makes the rules. As opposed to if they bought that lot from somebody else and buy it beware, I might have a different view. But because of this one, because of that, that was what, I think we had the hearing early on and in my mind, that's what I was struggling with, was hardship. But going through it and the testimony presented, I, I'm comfortable and I do see the hardship here that's so unique. I wouldn't see that necessarily, see that going forward. I don't want to set a precedent, at least in my mind, I don't speak to everybody, but. So if someone comes in with a non-buildable lot, that's a challenge, just because they say, well, you did it before. If they meet these facts, then I would find that way, but this is fairly unique where the town did some things. I'm not saying they were wrong, but they, they made the representation may not have been accurate and these folks relied on it. This town makes the bylaws. They had also acted on that, so that's quite a long-winded story on hardship.
I agree with you. I mean, I remember, there was one, I remember before, many years ago, where someone had purchased a plot, you know, a private purchase. It was a non-buildable lot. It remained non-buildable even after applying for something and we could not approve it.
Yeah.
It supports what you just said.
Yeah, it happens and this one, this one was a little bit different for me, so.
Still had a unique soil condition.
Oh, yeah.
Unique shape of the lot. It had unique conditions.
Right.
Would never be a precedent.
No hardship, those are.
Well, I mean, they were willing to buy.
They still could have fit a 16-foot house on there though.
Trying the best they can.
Yeah, right.
You know what I mean? They still could fit a house, not necessarily the one they wanted.
That's correct.
What's that?
It's right. Wouldn't have been marketable maybe, but.
Somebody would have bought it in this economy.
How good a shape is the dam?
Possibly, right.
So, so in terms of the motion here, I mean, I know we have to still take a vote of yes.
But I agree with you.
They did buy, they ended up buying not just one lot, second.
I think, I don't think we have to vote on it. I think we just need to sign it if we agree with it.
We never officially voted yes to grant, though. I think we have to vote that, which is your, oh, everything.
I could, there used to be one of them.
Oh, so the motion then is to accept the decision as written?
Well, no, they ran the last one.
The motion is to. Grant the variance.
Grant the variance.
Right.
With the findings.
It's drafted.
As drafted and conditions.
The findings.
I have several. I know, I have several projects. Except it does slow down a little, you know, in August.
All right, so I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
That we, that we approve, is it approved? Do we approve the variance?
Grant the variance.
Oh, I'm sorry, grant the variance as written in the decision with the, with the findings and conditions as written in the decision.
Right.
I can't.
I can.
Is there any discussions, is there anybody in the audience, on Zoom that would like to speak towards this?
No, I don't see anybody.
Elaine's the new audience.
Lost everything.
So.
I think we'll do this by roll call vote.
Roll call vote, right.
Our ones of viewers.
Timothy Martin, yes to grant.
Jose Bastiano, yes to grant.
David Axberg, yes to grant.
Josephine Kordahay, yes to grant.
Christopher Micka, yes.
To grant, to grant.
Oh.
Yes, to grant.
All right. I missed that bit. Sorry.
It's approved.
Okay. What do we do for signatures?
Do you want us to sign here? Do you have?
Yep.
Design?
Yeah, we do have.
Yeah, so she's at the signature page.
Interesting case.
Would please? It's an interesting piece of land that took two lots.
So we want to deliberate, yeah, we'll talk about Shire Drive. So we heard, I think there was some clarification tonight. I think there's stipulation from the representative for the landowner that there was a viral, they don't, they don't dispute that. I think they indicated that in their mind, they were feeling good faith. And in their mind, they thought they were moving quickly enough to avoid penalties or fines and things like that. He didn't have historical back to 2018, but he didn't deny those letters. I'm just of the mindset that, and I think Courtney touched on it, that the town has put in, and I think first of all, for me, I think I certainly would uphold Mr. Bullock's decision. It's just stipulated. There's nothing, no reason not to in my mind. The question comes down to the penalties and the fines. I don't know how much time the taxpayer has paid for this. I don't know. We asked, we may never know something like that, but whether it's significant or not, it sounds like there's substantial time put in by the, by the town on this. Therefore, I'm of the opinion that I would be willing to support a motion that just upheld Mr. Bullock's decision and didn't discuss the levy. I don't know the dollar amount of it. His office can then work on that and justify that and if they, so if they, if they want to pursue it, they can. If they don't want to pursue it, we're not making them. But I think because they have the time involved and I don't know what that time effort was.
The decision was correct for them to do that and it was obviously sufficient to make them act. They just didn't act. They probably should have had a better timeline for the, for the residential, because they've done a good job cleaning it up.
Yeah, no, it seemed out of character because you see the, the company and the building, beautiful property up there and maybe it was a lack of communication, like you said, but I think once they received that letter, the burden's on them to react and not from Mr. Bullock and Courtney's point, who's he supposed to contact every day? He's got enough things.
I think that was part of, part of the issue may have been communication.
Yeah. The fact that they had the two other properties, they got them both as additional purchases beyond what they already have?
Yes.
Yeah, they bought them through, on the bank foreclosed on the, at auction.
Were they planning to expand or?
Um, I don't know. I think they were more or less bought them, bought them for future develop, you know, sell them off for development down the road. So expansion.
But they inherited all the junk on them too. In one case, one of them had a lot of stuff on it already.
Well, yeah, some, but.
Yeah.
Did anyone, any talk about them securing the building?
No.
This girl's from Detroit. I see a building like that and I'm just like, are you sure? But I don't pay their liability insurance, so.
Yeah.
It's a shell of the building, right? The building is there?
Yeah, it's a shell.
Yeah, so it's not like it has floors and stuff like that?
No, it's all.
No, but you could totally party in there.
Oh, okay.
That's what, I'm not thinking about hiding bodies necessarily, but I'm thinking about parties.
If you really want to party, the police office, the police station is like right there.
Station's nearby.
I mean, they might be the ones partying there.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, you know.
We never know. But there's no nuisance issues or anything like that.
I will say the good, I will, just in terms of that point, I didn't see any signs out there, actually, no. So.
A little, by such as a smidgen of spray paint.
There's some spray paint.
Yeah.
A little tagging, but not.
No loitering on a regular basis.
Not partying, per se.
No campfire.
I think, I think you're right. The decision, the decision is what we support.
Yeah.
We don't even get involved with the other side.
We didn't get involved in that in the last one. I don't think there was a levy, but, you know, it's tough for us, at least for me, it's difficult to say. Believe me, I don't want to tax somebody, a business owner especially, or anybody, right? But if the taxpayers put out a lot of money on this thing, one way or the other, and it was ignored or whatever, you know, I'm here for the town and that's, that's what my role is. I hate to, I hate to see an economic impact to a business especially. But I'll let that lie, in my mind, I'll let that lie with the, with the building department.
So can we make a motion that just as we uphold the building commissioner's decision?
We deny the.
Deny the appeal.
We deny the.
We deny the appeal.
Okay.
But acknowledge that the cleanup has happened.
Yeah.
We can deny the appeal because the cleanups happened.
Well, we're gonna deny, he appealed the decision of the building commissioner to commence with, recommence with enforcement. So we would uphold his, we'd.
Deny the appeal.
We deny the appeal. Uphold the building commissioner and then stay silent on the issue of fines and let town council work it out.
Because there's no fines tolling right now. There's no fines accruing right now.
Since February, supposedly.
Right.
They can work out the range that they want to, you know, the window that they think is.
Or whenever they.
So does the motion, does the motion have to acknowledge that we're not saying, we're staying silent on the fines or just don't say anything?
I don't think it has to acknowledge it. I think just either deny the appeal and uphold the decision.
Okay. Well, then I'll make a motion that we deny the appeal for 9 and 20 Shire Drive and uphold the building commissioner's decision.
Is there a second?
I second it, Josephine.
Okay, is there any, any further discussion? There being none? Why don't we do a roll call vote on this? Tim Martin, aye. Jose Bastiano, aye.
David Axberg, aye.
Josephine Kordahay, aye.
Chris Micka, aye.
It's a vote. Thank you.
Yeah.
Did you all think it over there?
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't, I, I mean, I like upholding the town's officials.
Yeah.
I like upholding that, but if the fines are excessive, I don't like that.
Exactly.
And I don't know.
They'll negotiate that with.
Hopefully they'll negotiate that.
That will most likely be a negotiation, or they'll take it to the magistrate.
But as we know, the threat of the fines actually had the desired effect.
No, it did. And I, and I, I mean, I'm, I'm all, I'm all for that. That's, this is what I do for a living and fines are the only way that we can actually get people to start picking up after the dogs.
Right.